Okay, we'll call it to order this March the 13th, 2019 meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Right.
Commissioner Waymire.
Present.
Chair Howard.
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present. If you'd all stand joined for the pledge allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Pastor Leonard Chesbrough of the New Life in Christ Church.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious Father God, we come to you with a heart of thanksgiving. We thank ye Lord for this day. We thank ye for many blessings ye bestow upon us each and every day. I pray, God, ye bless each one of the county workers and all their families, Lord. Just be with us, guide and direct us, and show us what ye'd have us to say and do this day. Just guide and direct this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Excellent. Thanks, Lenny.
You make sound of public comment?
Have one.
Citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion limited to five minutes and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Gene.
Yeah, I have to bang when I come up here.
Oh, no entering.
This is Gene.
Good morning. Gene Hurt, 2019 West, or 219 West Fourth Street, Linden, Kansas. Well, there's reasons why I haven't been here since the first of the year. Most of you probably don't know. I had to have a, I got gangrene in one of my big toes, my left foot. And since I have diabetes and I had, was taken to Shawnee Mission Hospital, I had to have it removed. And in the process, I was sick and everything else too with, and my kidneys were acting up and all that. But I was in the hospital for a whole month and then I was out and went to Brookside, appeared over Brook for rehab, and I just got out last Tuesday. That's why I haven't been here. But I have to make a point to be here today because I've been, I've looked at the films of the meeting since the first of the year and, you know, I'm a little disgusted because, you know, I remember Don Stolmar making comments during the campaign promise, you know, deal that he was upset because he wasn't having enough information or enough meetings. Well, today, your agenda is loaded. The biggest meeting you've had since the first of the year. The rest of the meetings you've had, you've only had maybe one or two items. And I don't know why you didn't put some of this beforehand today so that it'd be more equal time. But anyway, I hope and this commission will move forward this year. I do, but, but there's a couple of things I want to address. You know, Mr. Lee over here is new, okay? But he don't know everything out there in the county like I do. For the seventeen years I've been around here, nothing has been discussed about the ditches. You know, in Dunn's area, one year at Osborne Road over here, there was a lady that wanted a Colbert Dunn and they put a Colbert deal out and there was a tree, right? Smack dab in the ditch. And it was so big, you couldn't get your arms around it in the ditch. And the water was flowing down and hitting the tree and the water was going out on Osborne Road. Now, this has been a number of years ago. Well, it took an arm and a leg to get the county to remove that tree. Well, it finally had to get removed because of what was happening to that road. But also, I have to make a comment about the bridges that was brought out this year last week. Ian, you're new on the commission. And I don't know if you know that there are two maps in this county. One map for the local bridges, county bridges, and then there's a map for the state bridges. Okay? There's two different segments. There are a hundred-year-old bridges in this county, okay? They're not being looked at and not carefully examined. You know why, Ian? I just want to let you know so you can do it, your investigations yourself. They're on minimum maintenance roads. The farmers have to cross them bridges and some of them have been deteriorating. And I know what bridges are because long before Brown came here with Lisa Johnson, I brought down the man from up Topeka about the bridge issue. And there was bridges I went out and saw that still haven't been taken care of out there that are bad. They're deteriorating. There's some down there west of Richmond. There are minimum maintenance roads down there that's got state bridges and the minimum maintenance roads that are wood bridges west of Richmond in Howard's area. But there's also bridges over in Stolmar's areas that's same way. Now, I hope that somebody will take a look at those and be more pertinent with them. But, but like I said, you know, I, I'm disgusted from what happened and already phone calls have been coming to me, even when I was in rehab. It's a, "Gene, where you been? You haven't been at the county commission meetings. Why?" And I said, "People can come to me." And I give out my phone. They want me to give my phone number out today and I will. It's 785-893-4552.
One minute.
Because I, because I am devoted to this county even though I don't live in it at this point in time. Because I see what's happening to the roads. And you know, already some have already jumped you, Ian, in your area about what this county has done out there on some of those roads pouring that rock and grading it almost into the ditches. So, you know, and the weather's gonna be cooperating with all of you. So, like I said, I got a lot more to say, but I can't say it today. I'm out of time. But please, do something for the people out here in the county. They're all hurting with this weather. Thank you.
Okay, it takes us to correspondence and organizational business. First item on correspondence and organizational business, recognize departing director of community corrections, Allison Dickinson. Gaila.
Good morning, commissioners. I would like to recognize Allison today. She has been a member of our organization since December of 2008. She was a case manager when she was hired. After that, she was promoted to the assistant director of community corrections in April of 2014 and as the director in June of 2016. She has more than ten years of experience with the county and she is leaving us for other employment. We're sorry to see her go, but also excited for her new opportunities. So, Allison.
Allison's also on the first item of business. We're gonna move that up to, to right now and do that. She has someone here with her she wants to introduce us to. The item will be consider appointment to the Board of Community Corrections, a representative on the advisory board. Allison.
All right, thank you. I'm before you this morning in regards to adding a member to the corrections advisory board. This is a board that looks at the different programs that we will need in our community to be able to serve those adult and juvenile clients. And so today, I have one of the representatives, her name is Taylor Jones. She is the director of community services at the Willow Domestic Violence Center and she helps service our area. So, we would like to invite her to be on our board to represent Board of County Commissioners' general position for social services.
Hey, Taylor, you have anything you want to say?
Thank you for having me. I'm really excited. All of the information that Allison was able to give me, I was really excited to jump on a board like this. So, I'm just excited to see what that can do for the community that we serve.
Appreciate it. We need a motion or we just, okay. Any questions for Taylor? If not, I would look for a motion to approve Taylor Jones to be put on the community corrections advisory board. So, move. Have a motion for a second.
Second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you. Okay. Take us back to correspondence and organizational business. Get started on our community partners' funding request presentations. First one's, you wanna go ahead and start?
I'll just say before we start, we're gonna try to hold really pretty firmly to the schedule so we're gonna be watching the clock so we can be respectful to all of our partners and make sure that by the time we get down to the bottom, we're not off schedule. And as you know, we also have a lunch meeting, so we need to really stick to our schedule today. So, we've allotted ten minutes of time for each partner and then a little extra time to, for you guys to ask a few questions and, and change over to the next person. But we will have a follow-up meeting to this. This is just the opportunity for these partners to present to you today, for you guys to kind of think over what they present to you today. And then we will bring it back to you on a later meeting to discuss any, any other questions you have about it or, and also the funding and how you would like to see that set in the budget.
Okay, our first community partner that's up today is the Franklin County Conservation District. Carrie.
As you know, I'm Carrie Harris, the district manager for the Franklin County Conservation District. This morning, I also have chairman Doug Smith from Williamsburg, treasurer Dwayne Legall from here in Ottawa, and member Stephen Curtis from the Pomona area. Our vice chairman Cecil Rockhold and board member Ron Dunbar both had some calving issues in this lovely weather this morning and were unable to make it in. So, let's see. Hopefully, you had the opportunity to view the short video that we emailed out to you last Friday. There was a lot of great information in that and the video itself was ten minutes long, but I wanted to include it as part of our presentation. It was produced by our National Association and highlighted the past, present, and future of the nearly three thousand conservation districts across the nation. I wanted to add a few details specific to here in Franklin County with that video. The Kansas legislators passed the conservation district law in 1937. Franklin County became the fourteenth conservation district to form in Kansas on April 25th of 1941. County funds to allow the district to hire a part-time stenographer were approved in 1955. In 1964, the conservation district began the annual process of presenting a detailed budget request to county commissioners. And one year later, in 1965, state funds were leveraged for the first time to aid in increasing funds for the operation of the conservation district. So who is the conservation district? We're a subdivision of state government organized by the citizens of Franklin County who saw the need in the interest of public health, safety, and welfare to form a locally-led organization to address soil conservation and other natural resource concerns. We are the primary local unit of government charged with the conservation of and public education regarding soil, water, and other natural resources. Our governing board is comprised of five locally-elected citizens of the county known as supervisors. Although they do serve as public officials, they do not draw a salary. They simply volunteer their time thanks to the value they see in conservation and being good stewards of the land. Supervisors establish local priorities, set policies, and administer non-regulatory conservation programs during monthly board meetings with specific guidance from the Kansas Department of Agriculture's Division of Conservation to properly carry out conservation district law. They also hold an annual meeting each January in which a full report of district affairs and finances are provided to the public. We are proud to be a member of several state and national professional conservation organizations. Through these memberships, supervisors and staff remain engaged in conservation program development and delivery to better address resource concerns for local citizens. We are a grassroots organization who works cooperatively with local citizens to identify and address a wide range of environmental concerns including agriculture and urban erosion and sediment control, water quality, water quantity, range and pasture management, fish and wildlife habitat, all in order to benefit the local environment and the local economy. We partner with local, state, and federal agencies to provide the public and others with resources, training, and technical assistance related to all natural resources. We implement initiatives that protect natural resources while helping create a sustainable future and quality of life for all citizens. Thanks to the work, or the work of conservation districts impacts you and everyone in all areas of the nation, from the largest cities to the smallest of unincorporated communities. So what exactly do county funds allow us to do? In 2018, we were able to leverage $21,427 from the state of Kansas. This is a 47.6% return on investment for the county. The district has leveraged state operating funds in various amounts annually since 1965 and have utilized the state funds to cover administrative and general office management expenses. According to Kansas State Statute 2, 1907(c), the conservation district is eligible to receive up to $25,000 through the Kansas Water Plan as a matching fund. In recent history, the Kansas Water Plan has experienced significant shortages, which means programs funded through the Water Plan have experienced shortages. If more local voices contacted their state legislators regarding the need to adequately fund the Kansas Water Plan Fund, it would be extremely beneficial to conservation in Kansas. It would also allow us to increase our return on the investment to Franklin County. County funds allow the Franklin County Conservation to exist in order to serve the residents of Franklin County. Our service area for implementation of program delivery is Franklin County. For day-to-day operations, we do not cross county lines. We cannot call on other counties or entities to provide us funding. There are special projects and events where we might occasionally collaborate on a watershed basis or within our extension district, but funds and routine services are not administered beyond the county boundaries. County funds allow the board to hire one full-time employee. The district manager coordinates all day-to-day activities and events of the conservation district as outlined by the board in the annual work plan with guidance set forth by the Kansas Department of Agriculture to properly carry out conservation district law. Gone are the days of that part-time stenographer that the district hired in 1955. Today, I serve as the payroll clerk, the accountant, the HR department, the webmaster, the IT specialist, public relations specialist, media contact, legislative contact, freedom of information officer, equipment manager, seed specialist, grant writer, education coordinator, cost share information management system administrator, volunteer coordinator, and other duties as assigned. I work daily to aid the board in successful implementation of on-the-ground conservation while leveraging additional funds for best management practices and conservation incentives to help create a sustainable future and improved quality of life for all citizens. Since 1941, Franklin County has benefited from having a local conservation district in place to provide programs, services, and technical assistance and to administer financial assistance programs not available through any other department, agency, or private industry in order to conserve our natural resources for the future for all citizens. Aside from the environmental benefits of healthy soil, water, air, plants, and animals, and ecosystems for our future, there are also significant economic benefits of conservation. This graph shows the leveraged funds available for implementation in Franklin County directly or in cooperation through the conservation district. The light green bars show the actual 2018 leveraged amounts. That's really hard to see, I apologize. So, the left, the first set of bars. The brighter green, the larger bars, are showing the value of on-the-ground conservation work that was implemented with the funds. As I have already highlighted, the very first state aid is that operating fund that we're able to leverage in July. The conservation district, unlike other agencies, organization, or private sector business, is also able to leverage cost share assistance funds. The cost share funds are used to help landowners offset the cost of installation of best management practices to address resources, resource concerns. In 2018, we leveraged $28,448 and installed $73,158 shown here in the second set of bars. That was through the Water Resources and Nonpoint Source Pollution Program. The conservation district also plays a critical role in develop, or delivery of farm bill conservation programs through our working agreement with USDA and RCS. Through our local operational agreement, the conservation district provides administrative assistance to NRCs for program delivery in exchange for our office space. With reduction of federal employees due to retirements and promotions and unfortunately, many of those positions remaining vacant for extended period of time, having a stable and active conservation district for successful customer service and program delivery is even more critical to the, to the success of NRCs and the district partnership now more than ever. We are a key partner in assisting Franklin County landowners in receiving $192,898 of incentive payments, which implemented $245,000 worth of on-the-ground conservation practices through equip and CSP. The last section on this bar graph shows the total values of funds leveraged directly or through partnership with the conservation district. $242,000, which implemented $340,000 worth of on-the-ground conservation work. The county's commitment of $45,000. But we don't stop there. The conservation district also assists Franklin County landowners in receiving incentive payments through federal CRP program and the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks Habitat First Program. When we add the value of these programs, our chart would look like this. The red circle shows an additional $11,497 worth of funding that was leveraged through the state conservation and water quality buffer initiative and habitat enhancement programs. Franklin County processed $276,000 worth of CRP rental payments and incentive payments to address water quality, soil health, and wildlife habitat protection. After we add these programs in, the total value on, uh-oh. The total value on the right jumps to $254,000 of leveraged funds directly and through partnership with the conservation district. This is the same figure that is shown on page one of the paperwork that you received. The on-the-ground benefit is suddenly $606,484 of on-the-ground conservation work in Franklin That's nearly thirteen and a half times the value of the investment by Franklin County Advalorem Tax Funds approved for the conservation district in 2018. This chart does not show the value of services we are able to bring to the table with our partner agencies specifically at Franklin County, the Public Works Department, the Noxious Weed Department, Environmental Health, and Emergency Management. This chart does not also include the value of conservation education provided to the public through field days, workshops, or environmental education programs that are provided occasionally to local schools. The bright green bar on the far right would continue to rise if those figures were included. We would love to see the yellow bar rise as well. The conservation district was able to provide this amount of service in a twelve-month period with one full-time employee and five volunteers. Imagine how productive we could be if funding allowed us to have additional staff. Along with this presentation, the conservation district board of supervisors have provided the documentation requested through the community partners' funding application process to show a 2020 funding request in the amount of $47,150. This $2,150 increase includes a two-and-a-half percent cost of living increase. As we sat through the meetings last year, we heard the commissioners talk about how valuable employees are and a two-and-a-half percent cost of living increase was approved for the nearly 230 county employees. We are also asking for $650 to cover business expenses that have increased, including postage, IRS mileage reimbursement, and capers contributions. Our local operational agreement with USDA and RCS provides significant operational savings to the district and the county. Through the local operational agreement, NRCs provides our office space, our furniture, our phone lines, and the utilities for the district. This prevents us from having to come back to you mid-year when the air conditioner dies. The federal lease at that building covers it. We do not have mid-year facility maintenance expenses to come back to you with. The conservation district used our 2018 funding the same way we have used our funding since it was first received in 1955, and we will continue to do that in the future. We utilize all funds to promote and administer the programs and technologies aimed at conserving our natural resources to assure current and future generations have clean water, healthy, productive soil, and a sustainable future. All funds are treated as public funds and the district follows strict guidelines and policies and financial management outlined in conservation district law. The board and staff are bonded. All financial records are public record. It is unlawful for the district to create an indebtedness greater than the actual cash on hand. The district is required to have an annual audit and provide a complete copy to the state. Our meetings, meeting minutes, and other documents are subject to Kansas open laws. Monthly meetings are, minutes are uploaded to the state of Kansas DocuWare document system. We remain dedicated to helping people help the land through the conservation of our natural resources just as we have since 1941. And we strive to provide quality resources and applicable experiences to allow current and future generations to understand the importance and value of conservation. If you have any questions, I would hopefully be able to answer them.
Come on, you want to put that on?
It was very informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we got most of the information here in front of us and we'll be discussing these a lot more coming up, so. Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks.
The next one will be the Franklin County Agricultural Society.
Good morning. I'm Melissa Hatfield and I am the president of the Franklin County Agricultural Society, or otherwise known as the Franklin County Fair Board. First of all, I would like to thank all of you for your continued support of the Franklin County. County Agricultural Society over the years. We appreciate all of the support that you give us, and I think that last year when Brandon Livingston was here with our community application, he spoke of some of the changes that we have been making as a fair board and as we're looking forward across the fair. I want to highlight some of those changes, then talk about some of the changes that we have planned for this year, and then talk a little bit about our strategic plan of what we would like to do in the future for the Franklin County Fair. First of all, our request for funding this year is actually decreased. Last year, we had asked for $17,000. This year, we would like to come to you with a $14,000 request. Either a combination of levy taxed or transient guest is what we would like for the board to consider, or commission to consider. At this time, we would like to do that just because we feel like with the members that we have on place and the activities that we have, we feel like the financial responsibility that we have bear as an agricultural society has balanced a little bit more, and we feel like the decrease in requests is the right thing to do, just from the standpoint of we have other means that we can get some funding. So from that standpoint, we wanted to highlight that we're decreasing our ask from previous years. What we've actually done in 2018 is we've logged over 1,000 volunteer hours out there on the fairgrounds. We started last April when the weather broke, and hopefully it will break soon here. But from that standpoint, we started actually working on our facilities and improving the plan of the overall flow of the fair. We have gone through, and I don't know how many of you actually visited the fair this year? Did everyone visit? Okay, those of you who haven't, we will definitely make sure the invitations attended this year. But if you've actually started, we started actually in our swine barn. And I don't think our swine barn, the electrical or anything had been done to the building since it was built. As a 4-Her, when I was there, I think the pig barn was exactly the way that it was at the beginning of last year. So what we actually did is we went in, water, kids, and electricity do not mix. So what we actually did is we went in and we upgraded the electrical. And at the time when we were looking at the building, we now call it Pig Parlor. We actually have gone in and actually painted the inside of it to the point that it glows. There is a nice, beautiful color to the pig barn as you look in there. We also moved to woodchips within that building. We have gone in and worked back with the actual drainage on the fairgrounds to make sure that we have proper drainage and that we don't have standing water anywhere during the times that when it may be raining or in misuse. I'm sure we'll be going back out there and working on drainage again soon as well. From the also standpoint, we made a decision. At the end of 2017, our bucket calf tent was hit with a very large storm where we still had bucket calf entries in the tent itself. And when the storm came through, we actually had to do a mad dash of bringing animals into more of a sturdy structure. So we made the decision to move and reconfigure our poultry and rabbit barn temporarily to allow our bucket calves an actual structure that they can be housed within so that we were making sure that we're taking care of not only the livestock and being good stewards of it, but also anyone who might be visiting as well. So we reconfigured our poultry barn. I think that was the first time that the poultry barn had been cleaned out in several years, and so we spent many hours reconfiguring the poultry and rabbit barn, allowing for the bucket calves to temporarily be moved in there. We'll talk about that in the strategic plan. But from that standpoint, reconfiguring that. We also spent quite a bit of time in our main arena where we were able to reinforce our bleachers, take care of some maintenance on the fence. And as a result, we actually saw a change in our lineup. We went to a ranch rodeo, which was highly successful and very well-attended this year. We added a Friday night concert, which from the standpoint, we were very pleased with the results. We hope to grow that and partner with KOFO to bring that back again. And then we had our demolition derby. So that was kind of the big changes in 2018. In 2019, what we already have planned, we're doing a consideration in pricing to actually add restrooms and making them ADA accessible within the Celebration Hall. Celebration Hall has not been updated from a bathroom standpoint since 1976, so we're working on actually updating those bathrooms and getting those up to code, and also adding four more stalls on both the men's and the women's, and reestablishing the shower facilities for those that use the shower facilities. We're also looking at expanding for a goat and sheep barn, which will allow us to move the bucket calves back down into the bigger barn to allow us that availability there. We also, from a bigger standpoint, are changing our lineup. We did a lot of research, and while we are not the shortest fair in Kansas, we are one of the shorter days or durations. Three days officially is what our fair was, and so we're actually adding a day to the fair to help with traffic flow. We will actually start our shows on Wednesday this year, so animals will come in on Tuesday rather than Wednesday night. And then we will immediately start Wednesday morning with our hog show, and then go on to our goat show, and then on Thursday, our sheep show and our beef show will now be on Thursday evening. This will actually allow our horse show for our 4-Hers to be on Friday and not have trucks and trailers competing with our demolition derby trucks and trailers in the same parking lot. So it allows for better traffic flow and safety for the patrons that are actually visiting. In addition, from the standpoint of what we're actually doing to promote agriculture in Franklin County, is that we're actually looking at doing a fall barbecue cooking contest to promote agriculture in the county and bring in additional tax revenue to the county as residents coming in and visiting there. So that's what we have on tap for that. We're also working on a strategic plan that would allow us to address some electrical concerns overall in all the barns and actually look at what we need to do across the board from our buildings. We'd like to add a commercial space where we can have more commercial boost during the fair with 9/11 and the Armory no longer being able to be used for 4-H exhibits. They had to move into Celebration Hall at that time, so that took up our vendor space, so we would like to look at what we can actually do strategically long-term for that. So those are some of the things that are happening with the Franklin County Agricultural Society. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I just appreciate what you're doing out there. It sounds like you've got a lot of good ideas, and I felt that it was kind of getting stagnant over the years, and it's like this new board's got a lot of things going, and always enjoy seeing when you come in and request less.
[laughing]
But anyway, no, no questions, just.
I have one question. I have one question, Rick. You got any plans for the south end, towards where the archery is and that area?
So what we've looked at, from a strategic standpoint, what we'd like to do is move away from the, as many porta-potties that come in. We'd actually like to put additional bathrooms in and hook up the concession stand to more of a traditional sewage system. So the lift station that is actually down there has ability to be done, hooked in, and that would allow us to actually put in bathrooms, and then that would allow us to do more of a grading in that area and possibly additional parking. I know that parking was, is kind of gets to be an issue in the state park across the way that they have an agreement with. And then we've also considered doing RV hookups. Quite a few people like to come in in their RV and camp during the fair, and then that would allow us to have that availability. Did that answer your question, Ms. Gunn?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, to have an RV place in town.
And it can be used for whenever. We do offer RV hookups, not during the fair, but if there was anyone that needed an RV, we do rent those out from a, like if you're wanting to rent, if someone is coming through, we do offer those, but not during the fair because we use that for commercial space. Okay? Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Derek, some of these, the numbers on this one kind of clarify this for me. This is showing 13, 210 they got last year. This, it shows 15.
I think she indicated that they are requesting less. I think they request.
No, 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 it's, this is, shows in the, they received last year, 17, 210.
Is that in her packet?
This shows they received 15, not what they're requesting, requesting 14.
I'll check that out and let you know.
17, 210, 18, but this year only 13, 210.
I'll double-check it and let you know.
Okay. Next one will be Prairie Paws, Melissa?
Good morning, my name is Melissa Reed, I'm the Executive Director of Prairie Paws Animal Shelter. And Prairie Paws Animal Shelter is a private 501(c)(3) nonprofit animal welfare organization. We were established over 70 years ago in 1948. Our mission is to provide compassionate care and placement to animals in need, all while performing at a 98% live release rate. Our budget is $813,000, which represents 511 from fundraising, $195,000 from programs, and 107 from various government entities, including Franklin County. Prairie Paws Animal Shelter provides a lot of critical services to our community. The one that is probably most known is our pet adoption services. We also do lost pet reunions, making sure lost and stray animals are returned to their owners. Owner surrender services, so when a community member has to give up their pet for various reasons, we are a resource for them. We also provide a trap neuter return program for feral or free-roaming cats for our community. We provide humane education presentations to groups across our community. We provide microchipping services, making sure those lost pets get back to their owners. We provide pet retail services with items that you need for your pet in our community. We also provide cremation services, community food bank, so members in the community who cannot afford food for their pet can come in and request food. We also provide food for various nonprofits in our community, so Willow Domestic Violence, Franklin County Cancer Foundation, and we also provide food for the Franklin County K-9 officers as well. We have community service partnerships with COF and Lake Mary and various organizations across our county. We have services where we provide bite hold quarantines, so bite holds in our community are quarantined out at the shelter. We provide animal control drop-off services, so this is stray animals in our community for the police department and the sheriff department can bring that out there. That is also if an animal is involved in a car accident on the highway or an owner is arrested and can no longer care for that pet, we do offer housing for those in that interim period. We have trap rentals, and then we are also the licensing agent for the city of Ottawa. So those are our top services. I will tell you that I could come up with another page of community services that we provide too. So the number served, in 2018, we were able to increase our return-to-owner rates by 11%, ensuring that those lost pets got back to their families. We reduced our average length of stay to 25 days, and I'm getting ready to celebrate my fifth anniversary here at Prairie Paws on March 24th. And when I first got to the organization, our length of stay for dogs was 45 days and our cats was 85 days. So you can see in a five-year period, we've been able to reduce that length of stay for our animals by 25, down to 25 days.
Is that dogs and cats?
Uh-huh, that's an average of the dogs and the cats. We had 1,347 animals enter our shelter, and we were able to adopt out 1,140 of those animals. 610 stray animals found a safe haven during their time of need. And we were able to provide 1,500 spay and neuter services, which were donated by Kansas State University. And if you took an average of $50 for a spay and neuter, and I don't know that we can get that in the community, but if you took an average of that, that's $75,000 worth of in-kind services that we received in our community from Kansas State University Partnership. We are able to provide 256 TNR surgeries, which prevented 858 kittens from being born in our community. We provided 22,767 days of care, and 45,000 meals were provided to animals in need. We had over 412 volunteers who provided over 8,258 hours to organization, which equivalents to about four full-time staff positions. We had 21 critter campers and provided over 327 humane education presentations to citizens in our community. We have over 18,000 Facebook followers, 2,000 Instagram, and 1,000 Twitter. And we were able to raise over 538,000 in donations, and that's cash and in-kind for Prairie Paws Animal Shelter is requesting $40,776, which does not represent an increase and is a duplication of our 2018-2019 funding. These critical fundings will be provided to subsidize the cost of providing the following services to abandoned and stray animals in Franklin County. Vaccines, safe housing, appropriate veterinary care, nutritious food, microchips, heartworm testing, spay and neuter services, and all of the accomplishments that you saw previously in our services that we provide. At this time, I'd open it up for any questions that you may have writing our request.
How many animals do you have on average?
That's a hard question.
If I just walked in today, how many do you have?
125, ferries. We have puppies a lot of times, sometimes you count those litters. I always say we can house between 75 and 150 any given time, and then you open it up to fosters outside in the community and you can kind of grow a little bit there. But right now, I say we have about 125 animals.
Kind of arrangements do you have with the other communities in Franklin County?
For.
Like if they have a stray animal?
So as it, it's per city ultimately. We have an agreement with the city of Ottawa where we provide access to our facility 24/7. With the smaller communities, through their animal control services, we charge per animal.
How much?
135 per animal.
That's a one-time charge?
Yeah, one-time charge, mhm. And that allows us to hold an animal, advertise, try to get it back to its home, and then if not, then it rotates into our care. What we see a lot of times with those stray animals is they're not in the best health. A lot of times you'll have a heartworm-positive dog, you'll have a dog that potentially has an amputation. Those stray dogs are typically stray for a reason, and typical that reason is a medical need. And so in our strategic plan, one of the things that we're talking about is that need in our community for medical care, added affordable costs so that we don't see as many strays as what we're seeing now.
So your earned revenues trending up, what do you, what's the source for that?
That's a great question. Our adoption revenue. And we keep budgeting because we think we've hit the cap of what our adoption revenue. You'll see in our monthly report, we continue to have increases year after year. We budget for that, kind of that cap of what we think, and we continue to exceed that. If you ask me why I think that is, I think that is our marketing. We have a full-time dedicated Director of Administration who focuses on our social media and our marketing and our pictures.
Are you seeing more adoptions from farther away then?
We are, we are. We, from all over the country, it's crazy. We have people driving from Chicago and Denver and Texas, and it's incredible to hear the stories and to see how far they are driving, but we're seeing a lot more from outside our community adopting.
I know you guys are into quite a bit as far as sales of products and services, but that's the driver, that's the.
It's the adoption revenue, yeah.
Your animals, do they, do they chip those before when they're taken out?
Adoption, yes.
Yeah, all of them are?
If it's a return to owner, we do not microchip. So if you come in and get your animal before the stray hole period's up, it is not microchipped. Now, we do offer you a discount on your boarding fees to get the microchip because we want every animal microchipped. But every animal that leaves our shelter is spayed and neutered and has a microchip.
How did, how did you find 412 volunteers? That sounds amazing.
You know, we have a lot of events, for one. We've got a partnership with American Eagle, where we partner with them, Walmart Distribution. We have, what's really amazing, a lot of Miami County volunteers and Johnson County volunteers. I think what's different about our shelter, and definitely in the Johnson County area, you have a lot of options for animal shelters, what's different about our shelter is it's an individual touch. what's different about our shelter is it's an individual touch, we're a smaller shelter, we've got a smaller staff, we know our animals. We can engage with those volunteers on a one-on-one basis, and so you don't get lost in a bigger organization. And so, yeah, we've, we've seen significant success. And with that, we just revamped our volunteer program, so I'm excited to see where our numbers go. Now, you don't have to sit through a long orientation process, it's more of a one-on-one, there's an application that you fill out, and then you sit down and you meet and you get started right away. So I'm excited to see where our volunteer numbers will go with this new program that we have established.
What was the dip in your actuals on your government, governmental support in the last two years?
Um, that is the smaller communities not bringing in animals. Ultimately, they're, what we've seen is they'll have an animal control officer for a month or two, then they'll lose that animal control officer, and so it kind of fluctuates based upon that.
Can we ask, what's the minimum age for a volunteer?
Um, there isn't any now, we used to have it. What we did now is we actually have a cool kids' club program where parents can bring their kids in and you can read to the animals. And so that can go as young as you want to bring them in. So we have a, what we did is we restructured our volunteer program to make sure that we had an option for everybody in our community to be able to volunteer.
I know that the small, several of the small towns had a meeting, and they're working on the issue they have with the animal control officers, and not being able to, to deal with the animals that they have the problems with at this point, but they're working on a solution to it. Hopefully, and I know you said you'll work with them to, to help them get to that solution. So hopefully this year, we can see some, some things good happen for them out there when it comes to their animals they're running into.
Absolutely, we're ready to partner, for sure, we're ready to have those conversations.
Contributions listed would be donations received outside of fundraising efforts?
Um, contrib- contributions received on what page are you?
Uh, it's just on your revenue page. Fundraising and contributions are separate, I just assumed.
Yeah, yes, our, so our contributions are, are general donations, our fundraising, our typically our events, yeah.
Any more questions for Melissa?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Getting ways ahead of schedule, we okay to keep going as long as they're here, I guess?
Yep.
Okay, Casa's next, is Chrissy here?
Get a break?
You need one?
Yes, maybe later. Sorry, I didn't realize Chrissy emailed me a video. Do you have it on a flash drive?
We can take a break?
Oh, yeah, she emailed it to me this morning and I didn't get it.
Okay, we're about seven, eight minutes ahead, we'll take a five-minute break while they get that video up.
Here, do you have a flash drive in that computer?
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started back up with Casa.
Good morning. Okay. One more page. So as many of you know, Casa of the Fourth Judicial District, based here in Franklin County. It is an agency that serves, we do serve as all four counties, here in the Fourth Judicial District. We work for Franklin, Anderson, Osage, and Coffee County. We've been in existence since two thousand and two, working to serve the children in our district, to make sure that the kids have a voice in the courtroom. Our Casa volunteers speak exclusively for the children's best interest. We only handle one or two cases at a time per volunteer, to make sure that our kids have a true one-on-one experience, to make sure that our kids are heard in the courtroom, instead of just having a caseworker that has thirty or forty kids on their caseload, sometimes in excess of that. So we want to make sure that our Casa volunteers are with our kids in the foster care system, they're trained, they're in the courtroom, they're being active. Because our Casa volunteers work with victims of abuse and trauma and things like that, we want to make sure our kids are there. Our Casa volunteers also commit to at least one year of being in our program. And right now, we have Casa volunteers that have been with our program for at least fifteen years. So we have volunteers that are committed and are in it for the long run, our volunteers are very dedicated. So our program is working, our program is effective, we are looking for very positive volunteers, and we are being successful. With that in mind, in two thousand and eighteen, our Casa volunteers, they provided over twelve hundred hours of service to our children. We had two children in Franklin County successfully get adopted this year. We also had one child in Franklin County successfully return home to their parents. We were able to ensure that the home was safe, secure, and had everything they needed. We also had a child in Anderson County return home to their parents this year. We also certified three new volunteers in two thousand and eighteen, and they were immediately assigned to new families in need. We also, the Casa staff, which was myself in two thousand and eighteen, we were able to provide three, over three hundred hours of staff consultation services in Franklin County free of charge. This is to our local attorneys, our court families, grandparents, and children who were in courts, who were in court, the system, but we were not directly assigned. So this is additional help that we were able to provide to everybody in the community. Casa is really appreciative of all the support that we've received from Franklin County. With your guys' support that we received last year, we were able to then go to Osage County and show that Franklin County Commissioners increased our funding, and they increased our funding as well. They increased our funding by five thousand dollars, which is double what we had normally received. We also were able to go to Anderson County and show them that because Franklin County increased our funding, they also increased our funding. And they increased our funding to thousand nine hundred and forty dollars.
To how much?
I'm gonna flip one more page, sorry, I believe it is six thousand nine hundred dollars is what we now get in Anderson County. And Coffee County provided us with four thousand dollars. And this year, we are presenting to Coffee County again, and they are hoping to increase our funding this year for us. So we were able to go to the counties and show them that Franklin County increased our funding because they saw the need for our kids, they saw the need for Casa to be there, and our other counties said, we need you here as well, we need to increase our funding. We are doing a lot of marketing events, community events in our counties. We have partnered with a lot of community businesses to bring Casa to the forefront. We have H and R Block here in Ottawa is partnering with us to do fundraisers, community sponsorships, things with us. When tax season comes around, for everybody who comes in and gets their taxes done, they donate so much money per person back to us. We have a couple of housing groups here in town that for so many Facebook likes and shares that they have going on, they donate money back to us. So we do have solid community partners, and we're working with them as well. So Casa this year, with our funding that we received, we were able to hire a part-time volunteer coordinator. We were very excited, we hired that person, and so we do have that. So now we are able to put our volunteer training together. We are recruiting for that, and we so far have five volunteers that are signed up for the first training session, so that we can take on more volunteers and increase our children that we serve. So that is why we are asking for no increase, we are just asking for the fifteen thousand dollars again, to maintain our volunteer coordinator position, so that we can continue that and have thirty additional volunteers under that position, so that we can continue to serve the children here in the Fourth Judicial District.
Kind of paraphraser, Captain History, you came to us last year because you have one position?
Yes.
And that was at capacity, you have to have so many paid positions to have so many volunteers, and you were at capacity, if I understand, for that one paid position, and you needed another, another paid position so you could have more volunteers because kids were not being advocated for you, there's a bottleneck there.
Yes.
Yep.
I had a question on your revenue page, you had, you had fifty thousand in revenue that just has marked as other. Is that the other counties, or what is, you had ten thousand and two twenties and just only show it as other? What is that income from, is that the other county contributions, or what is that? Is it Jones Fund money, or?
Go out the page.
There it is, Chrissy, if you could go.
Um, oh, on that one. Sorry.
You got Franklin County United Way and then, and contributions and fundraisers, and then has three marked as other, a ten thousand, twenty, and twenty.
Yes, those are, um, we actually, Jones Foundation doubled our funding last year as well. We included in our Jones grant that-
They're one to twenty?
Yes, they increased us to twenty thousand dollars. And that funding is only for Coffee in, um-
Osage.
Osage County, so we do have to keep that funding there, but then we move other funding that we get to Franklin and Anderson County, so that we do split our funding sources.
Do you have to approach the Jones Foundation every year, or?
Yes, yes, I write a grant every year to Jones and show exactly what we're doing, our numbers of children served, our programs that we're working with. And then they reply back to us with an amount that they provide to us, and this year, they did increase us to twenty thousand dollars.
How do your cases across the four counties, I mean, numbers, do you have any idea on numbers? And volunteers?
We, usually the majority of our volunteers do come from Franklin County. Right now, I have eight volunteers currently that are certified and trained to take cases on. Our training is intensive, it requires thirty hours of a class that you have to take, and you have to pass the state background checks and screenings, and you have to shadow volunteers for so many hours. So I have eight that are certified right now, I have two that are taking a break, per se. They just had two cases that were adopted, and they were with those children for seven years. So we understand as Casa that when you have children that you were a Casa for, for seven years, that takes a toll. And so they are, they're not taking a case for at least four months, and they just want a break from doing that and being able to say goodbye to their kids and to start a new case. So we do have those kids, but the majority of our volunteers are-
So you have eight volunteers covering four counties?
Yes. And then I cover the remainder if we have additional cases. Our volunteer coordinator will be certified next week, so she will be able to cover additional cases. And then she submitted five applications for background checks, so we will be increasing. Now that she is on staff with us, we will be able to have more volunteer trainings, that will be her primary function. She is going to be out there recruiting and training volunteers as much as she possibly can, that was her primary goal.
You work out of schools quite a bit, I know. You have looked into possibilities, any revenue from the school districts?
We have not.
I know whenever someone, one of the principals came in and talked to us a year or two ago, I think it was, it was, that kind of was brought up and-
Yeah.
Curious if that was a possibility at all for anything. I know that they have their own issues with funding too, so, okay. Anything else for us?
We have looked at funding for, to receive United Way from Coffee County, to see if we are eligible for that, because we do work in Coffee County a lot. So we are starting the process to see if we can become members of United Way in Coffee County, to see if that would be an additional revenue service for us, so-
Sounds like a good idea, that would be good.
We are gonna, we are gonna try that.
You receive funds from Franklin County United Way, right?
Yes, we do, we see for Franklin and for, a small amount for Anderson County, and so we want to try for Coffee County as well.
Anybody have any more questions for Chrissy? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Takes us to Elizabeth Layton Center.
As I'm sure you're aware, my name is Leslie Bjork, I'm the Executive Director at the Layton Center. I've also brought Perry Chapman, our CFO, to accompany me today. We really appreciate the opportunity to present the budget request to you this year. And what I'd like to do this morning is just go over the four major areas of funding that we are requesting, and give you some updates under each of those areas in terms of service activities in the last year. We're very honored to continue to be your designated Community Mental Health Center here for Franklin County. Last year, we provided two thousand eighty-four, we, I'm sorry, we provided services to two thousand eighty-four unique Franklin County individuals. This was actually a four percent increase over the number of Franklin County individuals served from the previous year. And as I mentioned at our legislative forum in January, at this time, when I look at the U.S. Census Bureau statistics, we are serving about eight percent of the residents of Franklin County, so we're excited about having that kind of impact. We do have for you today, kind of hot off the press, copy of our twenty eighteen annual report, and if we could, Perry, we'll distribute those that way. And those annual reports have much more detail about our twenty eighteen service activity than I will be able to get into today, but, so I provide that to you as a resource for your review. So in terms of the areas of funding in our request, again, there were four major areas in which we would like to request funding around. The first of those is our twenty-four seven crisis mental health service delivery. In twenty eighteen, we provided five hundred forty-three crisis assessments. So those were five hundred forty-three different consumers who needed a crisis assessment in our community last year. That doesn't include ongoing crisis therapy services that were delivered to those individuals, that was just the first point of contact. This continues to be a service in incredibly high demand in our community, and we feel it's a really important service in terms of keeping our community members safe. So that's our first major area.
Describe as crisis service.
Sure, the crisis service is something that can be triggered by any individual or a community member agency, and it's a situation where someone might feel that they're in danger to themselves or someone else because of thoughts of suicide, or maybe thoughts of wanting to hurt other people. So when we get a request for an assessment of that nature, we send someone out. We have our own standard of access to be able to start that assessment within one hour. And in that assessment, we're kind of looking at a number of different factors and trying to determine, can we help contain this situation and keep folks safe within the community? Or do we need to look at a higher level of care like a hospital situation for a temporary stay? And so that's the decision-making that's happening in that first point of- Um, and so that's the decision-making that's happening in that first point of crisis assessment.
Is this something you're doing already or looking to add staff?
This is something we have done ongoing. It is a mandated responsibility as a community mental health center, uh, but it is something we can continue to see trending upward in terms of the number of crisis events in the community and the number of requests that we have for those events.
Individuals or is that somewhere, some of those, I mean, five hundred and forty-three, it just seems like, wow, we have that many individuals in that county that are in crisis or are some of those?
The same.
One person, the same person.
Are the un-duplicated individuals, I think is what I hear you asking. This particular number, five hundred forty-three, is the number of assessments that were completed. So it is possible that these are duplicated individuals. But, you know, I would suggest that crises are more common than I think people realize. And so it is something that is very frequent for us. Uh, it's a, it's a major part of our service delivery. Uh, the second area of funding request relates to delivery of services to Franklin County individuals who are uninsured or underinsured. Uh, in 2018, almost nineteen percent of all of the clients we served from Franklin County reported no payer source. And about fifty-one percent of Franklin County clients served, uh, reported a household income below eleven thousand four hundred ninety dollars per year. And again, that's a household income, not an individual income. This was a four percent increase from the previous year. And this is a number that, uh, since I've been appointed in 2015, I continually see this number rise each year. So last year, um, a four percent increase in the number of folks on that lowest household income. We, in 2018, had over one million dollars in unfunded care just for Franklin County individuals alone. And so that's a large degree of charitable care for our budget. Uh, the Franklin County funding is incredibly helpful for us in helping to meet that need in the community. The third area of funding in our request is around our continued participation in civic organizations in this community. And so, uh, those are things like the Franklin County Crisis Intervention Team. Uh, this is a team of organizations that come together and try to coordinate our response to mental health crises in the community. So we have great partners, uh, including the Ottawa Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, EMS Services, and our, our hospital partners at Ransom as well as others. And so there's ongoing meetings and coordination opportunities there. Also, last year, we increased our participation in this group by offering training opportunity. We did a week, um, I should say, the CIT Group sponsored a week-long training opportunity in crisis intervention. And, uh, ELC provided some staff to present at that week-long training. We, uh, anticipate that the week-long training event will occur again this year. And so that's just a little bit of a higher level participation and Franklin County funding helps to support our staff time to be able to participate in that activity. Um, some examples of other civic groups that we're engaged in on a regular basis include the Franklin County Coordinated Community Response Team. This is a group that looks after those who've had issues related to abuse, domestic violence or human trafficking. Also, the Franklin County Law and Fort, I'm sorry, the Law Emergency Planning Council. Uh, so the council that comes together around planning for emergency events, a kind of unanticipated emergency events and the, and the response that would be needed there. Um, and then finally, we're recently participating in the United Way Warm Shelter Planning Process. Um, so those are just a couple of examples of the civic groups in which we're engaged and we continue to want to do that. We strive to be a great community partner and respond to a variety of needs and understand what the needs are in our community and this engagement really helps. Uh, finally, the last area of our funding request is around the provision of community outreach services. These are things like education around mental health issues in our community. Uh, so some examples would be our mental health first aid training class. This is a course like medical first aid, but it is about how to teach people to do an initial emergency response to a mental health crisis before professional help can arrive. We offer an adult class and a youth class. Uh, last year, we trained one hundred individuals through this program. The course is valued at a hundred seventy dollars per person, but through funding opportunities like the Franklin County funding, uh, we're able to offer that at a much reduced price of fifty dollars per person. We also try to work with other funding opportunities to offer a couple of free courses throughout the year as well. Uh, last year, we also did a suicide prevention education event, the Ripple Effect Movie Event, uh, in the fall of last year. And we oftentimes are requested to do community in-service presentations. Uh, for example, next month, we're on, uh, the bill for the First Friday event that's happening at Neo Show Community College to present on ELC services. So all of these types of community opportunities are important to us. But again, the funding through Franklin County helps to support the staff time that is involved in engaging in the opportunities. So Franklin County funding continues to be super important to us in many ways. We've appreciated your assistance and support over the years and, uh, appreciate your consideration in the year to come. Uh, we'd like to stand for questions at this time.
Just out of curiosity, what kind of funding do you get from Miami County?
About two hundred forty-seven thousand dollars per year. And that's been pretty consistent for many, many years.
I take it you're not anticipating a large increase in state funding?
We actually received an increase in state funding this last year. Uh, another thing that's important to us is legislative advocacy. So I spend a lot of my time, um, in that effort. And we had some great successes with the legislature last year. And so we did receive, uh, an increase in some of our funding, uh, from the, um, from our mental health reform grants is what we call those.
Not reimbursement rates, but-
Correct, not reimbursement rates, which is our lobbying hope for this year, um, would be an increase in those rates, which there has not been an increase in Medicaid rates that I'm aware of since before two thousand. Um, so for nineteen years at the same rate has been very difficult. No inflationary adjustments, no-
Is it true, freeze for nineteen years?
That is correct.
Mental health centers across the state have an association and they've been working, uh, lobbying the state to try to get back to the levels of funding of two thousand six. So, that's, uh, just in the last two years, we've done a small increase, but again, we've got a long ways to go to get back to the two thousand six levels.
I know that, uh, the issues that State Hospital had over the bed situation was costing money to all this, um, health places. Have they got that going the right direction or is it still where it was at?
Yeah, I would suggest that it's slightly better than where it was at, but it's a kind of a day-by-day situation. Uh, there is still a moratorium on admissions at Osage County State Hospital, which means there's a waiting list. And, and as long as there's a waiting list, we're trying to work very closely with our partners here, law enforcement and ransom, um, and serving folks largely without any payment structure, um, while folks are waiting to get into the hospital setting. Uh, why I say it has improved slightly is in the last couple of months, the waiting list has gone down a bit. Uh, it was at one time up to twenty-five people on a waiting list, which meant sometimes people were struggling in the ER for up to three or four days, um, before admission. But that waiting list has gone down a little and I'm finally hearing some talk of what it would look like to end the moratorium. So it, it sounds as though they're discussing that possibility.
Are they doing some renovations there that would open up?
They did, yes. Uh, the, the moratorium largely began because the federal government shut things down because of the state of the, the physical conditions as well as staffing issues. And they've done honestly a great job of attending to the physical structure issues and trying to increase the staffing at the hospital. The staffing is the piece they're not fully there yet and that's what they tell me as to why they haven't ended the moratorium yet. They're not able to staff enough beds to be able to end the moratorium at this time.
Do you partner with schools at all to, for kiddos?
We do, we sure do. Um, we appreciate the opportunity of our Ottawa schools. Uh, at this time, we have for, for youth clients of ELC, we're able to go into the school setting and provide case management services. So our schools have been very welcoming and open to us being able to provide that in the school when that's necessary. We're also in some early conversations about doing something a little more proactive with the school and kind of talking about what that might look like, whether there could be some funding opportunity there to support that. But our desire would be to place either a case manager or a therapist in the schools to be a, a point to kind of identify folks early on in treatment before they get to the point of maybe being a, a consumer at ELC.
You don't provide the, the mental health services to the county jail, do you?
Uh, we provide crisis assessment services to the county jail.
You don't go in, because I know they have somebody that comes in and I, and I, and I always wondered, why is it not you?
Uh, my understanding is they contract with an alternative organization for that service.
If the county is paying you this kind of money, isn't that something that could be? I just, I'm just, I don't know. Anyway, it's a question I have.
Yeah. We'd welcome the opportunity to, uh, work in that effort if, if that's something that the, um, Sheriff's Department would desire. We certainly have been in conversation with our juvenile detention center on how we can get creative about providing services in the detention center. Funding is an issue. Um, but we're kind of talking about that and maybe trying to build an internship program that, that might be an opportunity to support some of those services. That would be a low-cost opportunity. But about eighty percent of individuals who are incarcerated have a mental health or substance use disorder problem. So we know the issues are prevalent.
You know, Allison says she gets grants for her clients that are no longer incarcerated and I don't know if maybe there's more additional, I don't, that'd be something that we need to research.
It's a great question. And I know Mr. Halliburton and I have kind of kept our eyes out for possible grant opportunities for the detention center there for juveniles and at this point haven't quite found that, that right opportunity that, that makes sense.
For my curiosity thing, uh, says, there's a list under your revenues of house rentals. Do you have property off campus?
We do. We have two small supported housing programs. And so what that means is we have a couple of houses that we've converted into individual, uh, not units is not the right word, but each room in the house can serve one individual. And so we, we serve about four to six individuals in each of our housing locations. And those are specifically identified individuals. So they must be participating in what we call our community support program. Um, they must be designated as having a severe and persistent mental illness and they must be on a path of recovery such that our supported housing would be a resting place to gather support for more independent living that would happen within a year or two years.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Take us to the COF.
Good morning.
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 I'm Chris Patton. I'm the CEO of COF and Carla is our Dean Hoff, our Chief Financial Officer. First of all, I want to thank Franklin County Commissioners for the continued support. We really do appreciate it and we rely on it. Again, this year, I'm not going to ask for any increase. As long as we hold steady, we're holding steady and doing pretty well. We will not be asking for any increase because we know we are as, under as much pressure as we are. So COF, y'all know what it does. It provides services to people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We serve about four hundred people, primarily in three counties, but we're in some other counties for some other programs. About a hundred fifty of those people are, are here in Franklin County. Our big thing that's, it continues, it's been going on almost since I've came to Kansas nine, eight years ago, nine years ago. Anyway, is what they call the final rule from the federal government. That was supposed to be in the spring of two thousand nineteen. That's extended to two thousand twenty-one or twenty-two, three-year extension. That relies on each state has to work with the federal government on its Medicaid plan. So we're, the state of Kansas is behind in that effort compared to a lot of other states. We have a new administration. We'll have to wait and see how things unfold, if they accelerate. But COF has done everything it can possibly do to, to take steps to be in compliance. But there's part of it, you just have to wait for the state and federal government to put everything in place. The other big impact continues to be CAN Care, which is where they've taken all Medicaid funding from the bureaucrats and turned it over to three big insurance companies. We've done, it's been very difficult. A lot of this, we, this lady deserves credit because if you're dealing with insurance companies, you have to be doggedly tenacious and Carla is doggedly tenacious. So you really have to justify what you're billing for and you have to be able to prove it. And if they try to turn it down, you just have to keep going after it and after it and after it. And then our other big thing we're dealing with is the Workforce Innovation Opportunities Act. That's another federal, federal, uh, initiative. And so the whole trend of our field is all about integration, getting people more and more integrated in as many ways as possible. And they want them not segregated in settings that are just for people with ADD. So we have Thriftopia. Hopefully many of you have been there. We're pretty proud of that. We have about forty people right now who are part-time employed in what we call pre-vocational setting, so they're paid. But it's a sub-minimum wage. It's a training setting where we hope to get them jobs in other places if they can. And our other big thing continues to be Integrated Employment Enterprises, which we spun off that four years ago. It's, this is its fifth year. And that was, again, in response to the final rule where we set up a company where a person who's not disabled works side-by-side with the people we serve, all at at least minimum wage and all are offered benefits. So those are two of our innovative attempts to try to create employment and integration opportunities for the people we serve. Any questions?
Just looking over the revenues, kind of interesting, like it has just county, is that both Coffey and Franklin County that you're listing there? At Osage?
We got three counties. We get, uh-
We're getting a hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred from Coffey County and thirty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-two from Osage.
Kind of interesting that you get, uh, ten thousand from KDOT.
Well, uh, we get it as, uh, because we have ten KDOT vehicles.
Okay.
And it's our operating, it helps very little set off our operating funds.
It helps with transportation. Transportation is one of your biggest expenses. The state doesn't reimburse you for that. They expect the people you serve to pay fees to cover it. The people we serve, by virtue of their disability, almost none of them can drive. So, vehicles are important. We have fifty-three vehicles in our fleet. KDOT is a way that we can, we don't get all of our vehicles there, but we can get some through grants.
How many's actually working at your plant out here on the north side?
How many people, staff?
Yeah.
COF has altogether a hundred ninety-two staff. And I don't know exactly how many are Franklin County. I, the payroll is, uh, we have that here, is, for Franklin County is three and a half million.
Chris, do you still manage the group houses?
Yes.
Still don't?
We still have, we have four group homes where seven or eight people can live in those, each have their own room. And those have to be staffed twenty-four hours. Then in this town, there's two, three-bed group homes. That's what you call intermittent staffing where staff are in and out. And then we have the apartment complex, which has, uh, eighteen, eighteen people living in it. So it's, and it's, uh, four quadplexes. And then aside from that, there's any number of people who live in just regular apartments that we don't control or operate.
And you have group homes in each of the counties?
Yes, we do.
And facilities also?
Yeah, so in Osage City, we have two of the eight-bed group homes and one three-bed group home. And we have a, a nice manufacturing facility. And then it was an old Dollar General store that was donated to us a few years ago. And then in Burlington, we have a very nice facility that the county built for us. And then in that town, we have, uh, two eight-bed group homes and three, three-bed group homes.
Between the integration efforts from the federal government and then the way the state reimburses for medical care, it seems like the last years have been, kind of turned your operations upside down. Do you feel like you've landed in a place that's sustainable right now?
Uh, I feel very good about what we've done and that's, that's a great question. And a way to look at that is with, with CAN Care, what you have, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be political at all, it's just, it's just economic law. If you turn it over to the managed care organizations, they're obligated to their shareholders to make profits. Therefore, logic dictates they're going to try to decrease- Therefore, logic dictates they're going to try to decrease, not, not with any malice towards us, it's just how it works, okay? By the same token, the federal government, out of who knows where, comes up with these regulations, and they don't come up with blueprints. But we, what they want you to do with all those efforts to integrate people and get them out of the building and all that kind of thing, that drives your costs up because you can't just park them in the building anymore. So you have these converging things going. We've, it's tough. Make no mistake about it. What we do, it's, it's brutally tough, but we feel we're navigating pretty well.
That's what, I mean, I know you've been scrambling for a few years.
Oh, it's tough.
Quarterback, trying to get away from a sack, but that's why, and I don't think it's done yet, but...
No, it's not, it's, it's not done.
Certainly, the federal government's initiative isn't, but I didn't know if, as of right now, you feel like you could survive if you were frozen time.
We, well, and we're fortunate, we're, we have a decent cash position. We always try to protect our cash to the extent we can. And, but it's tough. I'm not gonna, it's, it's really, really hard. But we'll see how it unfolds, and it's just surprising how much every election has an effect on us, even though we're so far down the food chain. You just don't know what the change will be or how, how, how it will affect. But two years ago, we had a three, four percent...
Three, and then the second year we got four.
The second year we got four. But that, this year, we don't know, that was after ten years of none, which is, that's just, that's a brutal environment. Then this year, you just have to wait every legislative session to see what will happen. And we're, we're very involved in our trade association, Interhab, to try to, we always try to speak up and let the legislators know what we need, but there's lots of competing forces who also need things as much as we do, so.
Is your enterprise revenue positive yet, the thrift store?
No. But we, we didn't expect it to be.
Sure.
So it's a new business, and it won't be five years old till October of, we have ten more quarters before it hits five. So we always, when we always try to base everything, like, okay, can we get there in five years? But we feel pretty good about it.
Get neutral by then?
Yeah. Oh, we'll, we'll be above neutral by then.
Good.
We think, we think. You don't know. But the citizens are, the donations we receive for that store, it's just amazing. It's, it's this unending supply of goods, so people really support it in that way. We want people to remember, you gotta support it by going in and making purchases, too. But as far as the donation stream, it's amazing what we get.
Any more questions? Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you very much. And again, we do appreciate your support.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
We need to change the video, so could we take a five-minute break while IT changes the video over?
Sure.
We'll take a five-minute recess while they change the video.
Chair?
Hey, well, go ahead and start back up with the Franklin County Historical Society.
All right.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you about the accomplishments and goals of the Franklin County Historical Society. I think I know everyone up here pretty much. I'm Diana Starzynik-Dine. I'm the executive director, and our mission is to preserve, present, and promote the history of Franklin County. In two thousand eighteen, we identified three areas that we needed to work on in order to better fulfill our mission. This included building new and stronger relationships with people and organizations within our county, more community outreach, and also working towards more financial stability. We've made tremendous strides in these areas, and we continue to work on them. Here's some information about what we've been doing and what's coming up. I'm really hoping this is the last snow picture I take of the depot this season. We had twenty-three hundred visitors at the depot in two thousand eighteen, and this is substantial because we had reduced hours for part of the year, something that we did in order to reduce our expenses. What's really interesting is how our demographics have shifted. In, a couple of years ago, I would have told you that our biggest age group was senior citizens, but this last year, it was eighteen to fifty-five. And we noticed that our children eighteen and under and our adults over fifty-five were about even, which means we're seeing a lot more families, a lot more younger people. And that's significant because many historical societies have expressed concerns that their populations are aging out. We have a lot of exhibits going on at the depot. We are also working on improving our permanent exhibits, but unfortunately, one of the things we have on exhibit right now are buckets. They are catching the water that is coming in through our ceilings. This is the twentieth anniversary of the rehabilitation of the old depot museum, but that also means that all of those improvements that they made are now twenty years old, and our roof is in dire need of repair. So that's one of our fundraising areas this year. The metal's in good shape, but the coating is wearing off, and that coating is what seals the seams on that turn-metal roof. So when you have a day like today, when it's raining and water is blowing in through these seams, we end up with water in the building. So we hope to repair that roof this year and in two thousand twenty to do the internal repairs, like the ceilings, damaged paint, and damaged woodwork. I'll also mention, the depot also serves as a community concierge. We fielded four hundred and ninety-five questions last year from non-museum guests, and we also assisted two hundred and thirty-five trail users. We anticipate that will go up as Legacy Square is completed and we're more visible because we'll be just across the bridge. We also received a substantial restricted gift to care for the cabin and provide programming at the cabin. This year, that allowed us to have more days when the cabin is open, but it also allows us to make repairs. Last year, a colony of ground wasps found their way into our cabin, eating through some rotted wood and making themselves at home. And so we worked on getting that repaired. This is Tim Wilson. He's in my phone as the cabin whisperer, and he is there pulling out that piece of rotten wood and replacing it so that it looks authentic. We've been working on our community outreach, and particularly in terms of programming for children. Last year, we did a pilot program for Pioneer Days at the Little Cabin. We had thirty-eight campers. They had a great time. They learned a lot. They were from all over the county. We're doing it again this year. Our theme will be life on the trails. And we've also been partnering with Ottawa Library to do storytimes. We did a storytime in the summer and then at Christmas. Our Christmas storytime brought one hundred and ninety-seven people to the depot. We promote the history of Franklin County in its many forms this year. One of the things we did was partner with the other community museums and Appenuse Museum, the Wellsville Historical Society, and Richmond Community Museum. And we had a museum hopper weekend where we were all open the same hours. We all promoted each other. We ended up with a hundred and fifty admissions countywide that weekend. We are hoping to have a traveling exhibit in two thousand twenty that we can move from public space to public space around the county so that even people who don't necessarily get into Ottawa will be able to take in some history. And this year, we're partnering with Ottawa Memorial Auditorium for a paranormal research event. We're bringing some history, they're bringing the ghosts, and it should attract a completely different audience. We, you've all been to the Record Center and you've seen what's there. In addition to working with our collection, we've helped a record number of researchers this year. In two thousand eighteen, we doubled the number of people who came in to do research. About fifty percent of them are from outside of the county. A lot of them are genealogy tourists and researching their local roots. And the others are all from Franklin County who are doing things like researching genealogy. And the other really popular category is property research, researching their houses, researching their downtown buildings, researching land. We think that a lot of the changes we're seeing in our demographics have to do with the fact that we have a really strong social media presence. We had about two hundred and fifty-three thousand impressions last year and thirty-eight thousand impressions on Twitter, and we have a really strong engagement. This is pretty typical. This photo of Louis Ruby generated fifty-five hundred views and seven hundred and twenty-one reactions within a couple of days of being posted. That's pretty typical for us. Because of this enthusiasm, we recently applied for and received a grant from Freedom's Frontier to redo our history portal website, to turn it into more of a Wikipedia-style site. Our dream is that for someone to start researching the history of IMES, and two hours later, they're reading about the naked voters. They don't know how they got there, but they've been on our site for two hours learning Franklin County history. Security is a really serious concern for us. You may remember that in November, we had an attempted break-in. Our door and lock were pretty badly damaged, but they held, our alarm did its job. We had Captain Wine Gardner walk through our building, and he said the biggest need we have right now is cameras. We've acquired some to test at the depot. By two thousand twenty, we hope to have cameras installed at all of our locations. We frequently have people who work alone in our buildings. Our buildings are kind of isolated, and having cameras is good for our staff, it's good for our collection, and honestly, it's good for our insurance rate as well. We have been working really hard on our finances this last year. We overcame a deficit by reducing our expenditures, raising more money, and just being the best stewards of the money that we have. In this photo, you see Gloria building a dress form for an upcoming fundraiser. It's actually cheaper to build a dress form to buy one. I think we named this one Esmeralda. We'll have a whole series of them. We also added directors and officers insurance for the first time, and by two thousand twenty, we hope to increase our insurance coverage on our structures to actually be enough to be able to make repairs in the event of a catastrophe. Many local businesses worked with us on in-kind gifts as well for things that we otherwise would not have been able to do. Loma Vista and Bones Landscaping helped rehabilitate that large eighty-five-foot flowerbed along Tecumseh Forest this last year. We also have a historical society member who donated the funds to us to actually do our very first audit, and so we are currently in the process of going through that. As you know, our organization has many moving parts. We own and maintain the old depot museum, Dietrich Cabin, a caboose, and a storage building. We also staff and work out of the Franklin County Records Cent, Research and Record Center thanks to the generosity of the county. We are the caretakers of sixty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-four artifacts. And while we have a lot to care for, we do it well, and we have a level of quality and professionalism that holds its own against bigger counties and bigger museums. During this past year, we've seen firsthand that we can find the right donor or the right grant for a lot of specific needs, children's programming, exhibits, collections management, even specific repairs. We received a donation this year from the Kemper Fund designated to work on our model railroad and, oop, I think I lost it. Yeah, there we go. As you can see, sometimes our model railroad needs a little love. However, a lot of these funds are very restricted. The gift we received to work on our website can't be used to pay for things you need to work on a website, like electricity, the internet, staffing, the computer. The funds we receive from the county help us with the core expenses that are difficult to raise funds for, but are critical to our ability to operate, but also to raise funds. Utilities, telephone and internet, security, janitorial supplies, parts of our payroll. We did request a small increase this year. If we were to receive that request, it would amount to about thirty-eight percent of our budget. With those basic needs met, we can raise the rest of the money to do all of the other things that we need to do in order to serve our county and also to serve as multiple tourism destinations in our county. Thank you.
Have any questions for Diana?
I, I do. In the last year, the county helped replace an HVAC system at the old depot.
Correct.
And I believe we, it was twenty-two thousand, I think, that the county contributed to that?
Right around there, yes.
I just, I wanted you guys to remember that she talked about specific repairs. That's in addition to the community funding. We gave them twenty-two thousand went to fix the HVAC at the old depot museum.
And we're not asking for any capital funds this year, just our operational.
Were you talking about water leaks and so forth? What are we gonna fix that up?
We're working on raising that money, and I think that we can raise the money to fix that. It's, it's a big visible repair, and we've already got about a quarter of the money raised. So I think we'll be able to raise the money to do that.
Nice.
The estimates that I have seen based on a couple of years ago were between ten and fifteen thousand dollars, which is substantially less than what we paid for the roof, which I think was right around five hundred thousand dollars twenty years ago.
How many years ago?
Twenty.
How long will it last?
Well, the metal's still in good shape, so if the coating does what it's supposed to do, it could last quite a long time. Some of the really old metal roofs are a hundred years old, depending on the thickness of the roof and whether or not they were properly cared for. Yeah.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our last one, the Franklin County Services for the Elderly.
Good morning. I think I know all of you, but I'm Sharon Geis. And it's great to be here. I have with me this morning our board chair, Don Higden, I'm only known him for thirty years, Don Higden and Joe Rich, who's on our board, and Regina Barnhart, who's been our dispatcher for ten years now. You may be aware and probably are aware that within the last year, the Meals Program has undergone a significant change, but that did not affect our budget as the area agency took over the provision of the Meals Program. And so the money that had been, over the years, allocated to Mid-American Nutrition is now allocated to the area agency on aging for the same match for that funding. In addition, we are continuing to provide rent to the different nutrition sites throughout Franklin County in order to keep those viable and going. They moved the senior center. Some of you may know that it's kind of been from one place to another to another, and currently, it's out in the industrial park at the central kitchen building. And Regina is working with the area agency and also Rock Creek, the new owners of Ottawa Retirement Village, to try and facilitate transportation to anyone who needs it out to the industrial park. And if finances are an issue, the area agency has indicated that they would help with the fares for that. As you know, at one point, we were on a donation basis. We are no longer on a donation basis. It is a fare system. Which kind of brings me up to another change that we made in the last year. We increased our fares from a dollar per ride in town to a dollar fifty per ride. Within the county, we increased it from two dollars per ride to three dollars per ride. And then for our medical only, which is the vehicles that our agency owns, there, we get no KDOT funding for those vehicles, that we increased the fare for that from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars for a round trip. Since I filled out and provided you with this application, we did get our grant funding letter from KDOT for the next fiscal year, which will be two thousand twenty, and we did get the full amount we requested, which is listed on your page twelve. We had requested a total of a hundred thousand six sixty-seven from KDOT. And between state, federal funding on that, we did get that full amount, which, as you can see, is a increase from last year. We did ask this group for an increase of three percent to our funding. As you are well aware, cost of living, you know, general increases causes all of our costs to go up. We have tremendously reliable staff. We have very low turnover, and that is the biggest part of our operations costs, as it is for many organizations, is our salaries and wages. We are working closely with the dialysis center here in town, also other dialysis centers to get people transported. They're really good to work with us, recognizing that we can only do what we can do in terms of transportation. And so they're, they have a very good working relationship with Regina and getting that coordinated. We did receive a grant from the Cancer Foundation this year to help replace one of our medical vans, and so they are also working with us. They provide some help with transportation to those patients that need it. We also work closely with... We also work closely with the Elizabeth Leighton Center and the Gopert Center and the different doctors' offices around town. And they know us at the hospital when they have people that need to be discharged and don't have transportation. They're well aware that they can call us and we can help with that. All of our vehicles are handicapped accessible. I don't think there was anything else I had. I did enclose some letters of support in the back. I know you don't like extra paper, but we had a letter from Brenda Fitz and Meyer at Ransom and we had a letter from the Dialysis Center and also from a client that has used our services and wanted you all to know how much they appreciate that. You also, on your page 14, have a look back of the numbers of rides we've provided in 2016, 2017 and 2018. Do you have any questions for me?
I have been delivering meals for, I can't even remember how long, but I know the numbers, it seems like they are decreasing. Are they, it seems like they're continually going down. Are we serving less people or?
Honestly, that would be a question for the area agency on aging because we don't. We used to get a report every month and since they made that transition, they've not gotten us that report. But I know historically that has been the trend, particularly at the congregate sites. The home delivered, I think, continues to go up. I think it's the congregate that continues to struggle.
When you're saying it's a dollar 50 in town, is that one way?
Yes.
And then so if I want to go home, it's another dollar 50?
Correct. And we do have punch cards that people can buy. One of the biggest concerns with going from a dollar to a dollar 50 is we didn't want our drivers to have to carry a a bag loaded with quarters. And it does seem to work nicely for people to be able to buy a punch card and it's one punch, so they can get a card for $45 and.
It'd be a great Christmas present for your mom or whatever.
Yes, yes. And actually, I understand that's what Rock Creek is doing. They're buying punch cards and then Regina punches it. And right now, they're paying for all the rides one day a week. Is that correct?
For a few hours.
Okay, yeah. Any other questions? We'd sure love to have any of you come and ride with us and see what it's all about. I know that my mother-in-law resides at Morning Star up at Rock Creek and I know, or Rockwood Acres. Too many rock things around here. At Rockwood Acres. And I know some of the families of other residents have discovered that when they have to have them transported and they can't go by car, that they can use our services as opposed to hiring an ambulance or somebody to take their family member to the doctor's office or, you know, if the timing were right, even the ER, I suppose. But, you know, we do have lifts on our vehicles. If they're wheelchair-bound, it's very easy to get them. Well, it's easier than getting them another way. But obviously, very, very economical to use that service. And I think it's a huge benefit to the people of Franklin County. Obviously, the Kansas Department of Transportation thinks it's a huge benefit to our rural area as well because they continue to fund it and we haven't seen a decrease in funding in that area. We did have to change where we park our vehicles because of Legacy Park, but so far. Today, it might be a bit of an issue because they have to walk a little further, but we'll get through that.
All right, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that takes us to the end of our community partners' request. I want to thank all of our community partners for coming in and giving us these presentations. They were all very good. We realize how important these funds are to all of you. We're going to be doing a lot of talking about it, looking at the numbers and seeing what we can do, so.
Before we transition, I would say this kind of fell on an interesting date because next week is spring break. And with at least two of you gone, we're not going to have a meeting. You and I have talked about that, Rick, but, so that would put the following Wednesday as the date that we'll probably have this back on for discussion. And so if you guys could get your recommendations to Janet and I, you know, if you're going out of town, I would say if we could have them this week, that'd be great. If you're staying in town, then anytime next week is fine. I'll be here all week. But that would tee us up pretty well for that following Wednesday, having the discussion. And the other thing that I would say, and I'm going to say this that week for sure, we've done this together long enough. You know, I don't make any recommendations when it comes to how the funds are allocated, but I will make a recommendation in terms of the total amount. And I will tell you that my recommendation this year to all of my department heads is that we once again stay flat. And so whether you take my recommendation for community partners or not is entirely up to you, but I will recommend that we stay flat on the amount that we were at last year. And so just something to keep in mind as you are looking through these allocations. We've had a lot of discussions about the capital needs of the county and trying to get out of debt and moving forward. And, you know, these are the difficult decisions that sometimes have to be made as part of that process. And so, yeah, look forward to hearing your guys' thoughts on this here in a couple of weeks.
And just one more thing. I'm sure you noticed as you sat down at your seat, there was a sheet there with the historical data from each of the partners that presented this morning, going back to, I think, 2013, what they had received from us. And also on there, it already has your name pre-printed on there and it has a space for you to write what you would think is appropriate for each of these partners. So that's what we would like you to return to us.
We aren't having any meeting at all next week, the, no, please, Senator?
Okay, takes us to consent agenda. Items today that need to consider and approve on the consent agenda are tax change orders in the amount of a minus $12,070. And the commission meeting minutes for March the 6th. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I mean, we approve this consent agenda?
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, Janet?
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Stay on the minutes, but yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, takes us time in business. We've already taken care of the item number one. Item number two, we consider the approval of a resolution waiving the GAAP requirements for 2019. Janet?
So this is a resolution that we pass every year as part of our annual audit. And we usually try to do it early on in the year, just so everyone's aware. It just says that we operate on the cash basis policy instead of generally accepted accounting principles. So that's according to Kansas statute.
Questions? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve waiving the GAAP requirements for 2019.
Do any governmental entities go accrual method?
I think Johnson County might do some of that. I don't know that they adhere to all of the, all of the principles of it. But, you know, this is, you know, smaller, smaller counties, you know, all do this and everyone certainly that our auditor helps does it.
It would be, I don't know of any cities or governments that do. It would be a big change for us. It's not like it's an option to change for us right away anyways, but it, I mean, one thing it would do is include depreciation, which would make us think about what we're putting back for capital needs or losing ground or making it up. Responsibility falls to us in other ways. We just, I guess, we need to be conscious of. I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the resolution waiving the GAAP requirements for 2019.
Second? Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Item number three, consider for approval entering into agreement for Economic Development Services with the City of Ottawa and Franklin County Economic Development. Derek?
Yeah, those of you who've been on the board the last several years know that FCDC is normally one of our community partners. And they still are, but we didn't ask them to come present this year because they're currently without a director. This is for 19 in any event. It's not for the 2020 budget year. So this is just the FCDC agreement for 2019. The amount is the exact same as it was last year. And in fact, it's appreciably lower than we budgeted. You will recall, we budgeted more because we were trying to accommodate a higher salary for the director position. Given that we haven't had a director, we, it's just we, there's no need to budget that higher amount. We literally haven't spent the money on a salary, so keeping the amount at the same level will be all we need. It's the exact same amount as the City of Ottawa, as it always is. Language is the same as it always is. This is, you know, we hope to find a director. We're starting a search process as we speak, so.
If we find a director, will, can this number change or not, or?
For 19.
Not for 19?
I have no fun to cover that if that is what we anticipate. Anything else? I would look for approval into an agreement for Economic Development Services with the City of Ottawa?
Oh, I'm sorry, you have a public comment on this item?
If it's in line?
Remember, the same things applies, five minutes and. Only this item. Only on this item?
Yes, sir.
Well. This item only deals with the City of Ottawa. Why, why, why is it just the City of Ottawa? Why, why do you guys, when are you going to start doing the other towns? What's wrong with Wellsville? You know, I've been up to Wellsville because when I was at rehab and I stopped in, that they took me to the, the place there in Wellsville that rehab has considerably grown in size. The town is moving forward of increasing in size. Why, why isn't there some kind of economic development with them? Or with our other towns in this town? Or in this county? Richmond, Pomona, all these towns. Why can't you agree so that they can be incorporated into something that would maybe be an advancement for our individual cities and towns in this county besides Ottawa? This was brought to my attention by some people over in Osage County, as well as people in this county itself here in Franklin. Why is it just always Ottawa? Why? Why can't it be every place? Why can't it be everywhere? Everybody's entitled to some development, economic development here in this whole county. I mean, some's got to change a little bit different than the way it's been done in the past. Why not consider that? That's what I'm, that's what I'm addressing today. Why not consider that in the future to these other towns? They're just as important as Ottawa. You know, Ottawa has, you know, seems like everything's Ottawa, but it's not. There's other towns around in this county. And people are feeling that they're being left out and so forth. And I, I think that you all need to start taking another look about what you're going to do about in the future. What I had.
I'm glad you brought that up, Gene. Because I think it gives, gives me a platform to state that I think that the county is open for business when it comes to those small towns. In fact, in our most recent round of FCDC interviews, that is a question that I personally asked to every single candidate. Well, we understand that Ottawa is the county seat, but what about these other towns? What ideas do you have for some of these towns? It is incredibly important to me. I will tell you in my position, it is incredibly obvious that the City of Ottawa has support. The City of Ottawa has support. There are all of these organizations designed to give the city support, raise funding for the city, but you don't see the same thing for Wellsville. You don't see the same thing for Richmond, for Princeton, Pomona, Lane, Rantoul, Williamsburg. And I do think it is important for this organization not to forget about those towns. And I don't think that we do. We have staff in Wellsville as we speak assisting them with their new project coming to town. We've told their staff that we're more than welcome to look into potential partnering opportunities on that project. And so I do think we're doing a good job of that, but I think it's important that we do. As we move forward, we continue to keep these towns in mind because if this board doesn't, then I'm not sure anyone's going to. So I, I think it's of critical importance.
Just to clarify, the only reason they're listed on this agreement is because we fund in parity with them, the same amount.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the only reason, actually, when you think of it that way. I mean, Wellsville's not asked to pay, even though they're the second largest city, any amount to the county economic development.
Yeah, yeah. Ottawa's on the agreement. They are a third of FCDC's funding. We are a third. And then a third comes from private industry here within the county.
So they're just listed to make sure that we're all in parity, but yeah, we don't get overcharged or?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we enter into an agreement of Economic Development Services with the City of Ottawa, provided by the Franklin County Development Council and allow the chairman to execute the agreement.
I'd second that motion.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, item number four, consider approving county spring cleanup days on Friday, April the 26th and Saturday, April the 27th. Peg?
Good morning. It is that time of year for spring cleanup. We always do it usually towards the end of April. I will tell you that the City of Ottawa has requested that they be a part of that this year. There was discussion on it last year and we just, we ran out of time. It was too short of a timeframe for them to be included. This year, what we would like to propose is that we have the transfer station open on Friday, April 26th, Saturday, April 27th to all county residents. They're allowed to come in, dump their items for free, except for tires, paint, that type of stuff. They would be charged for those. What we would do the weeks previous to that would be for the City of Ottawa on April 5th and 6th, we would have roll-off dumpsters placed in various positions throughout the City of Ottawa for them to use. And I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, David, that they are going to monitor those to make sure that there's not tires and various things we can't accept put into those dumpsters. The week after that, on April 11th, 12th and 13th, we would do the west side of 59 Highway, which would include Pomona, Williamsburg, Princeton and Richmond. And then the third week would be April 18th, 19th and 20th. We would be in Wellsville, Rantoul and Lane with those roll-off dumpsters. And then the Monday and Tuesday following each of those weeks is when Ottawa Sanitation, MBTW, would come in, get those roll-offs and take them to the transfer station to have them dumped. So I am.
Those are provided to our communities for free? Is that correct?
Yes, it is, uh-huh.
I know Princeton was wondering if there was going to be a change with the change of ownership, you know? They were kind of asking about their last meeting.
No, I discussed that with Ottawa Sanitation because that was one of my questions and they said no, that that was part of the contract when they made the changeover. So they're willing to supply the dumpsters as well this year.
Dave, ever since I've been here.
You're going to have an hour, hours of operation on your.
On that Friday and Saturday?
When you put it out, yeah.
Yes, it's in, actually, I think, yeah, it's in the letters that are going to be going out to the city clerks. On Friday, April 26th, we will be open out there from 8:00 to 3:00. We will be open out there from eight to three, and on Saturday, the twenty-seventh, we'll be there from seven-thirty to one-thirty. And that'll allow our people to get the floor cleaned up and the, the tipping floor cleaned up, everything put into trailers, and be ready for start of business the next day.
Okay. No more questions. Look for a motion to approve the county's spring cleanup days on Friday, the twenty-sixth and Saturday, April the twenty-seventh.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the two dates for Franklin County Cleanup Day, twenty-sixth to twenty-seventh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Jen.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Maymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five, sir approval to solicit bids for the replacement of the lift station pumps at the county barn. Brandon?
Morning. Morning. Yeah, so we're looking for approval to get bids for the replacement of those pumps out of the Public Works Barn. Right now, they're pretty old. It's my understanding that we're running on just one pump right now. The other one has been down for a number of years, and it's just not repairable at this point, and so if we lose the other one, then we have no way of getting wastewater away from that building and into the city's main lines. So we'll be looking to get approval for that.
Have we solicited bids for something like this before? Type of pumps, anything?
I don't believe so.
That's Entropolis, the sewer district out there. We had a mop head stuck in it a few years ago.
Maybe worth like eight grand or something.
This is on our list of things that we're looking at for, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
We did it somewhere for lift station pumps, well, sure.
We, we think, preliminary quote we have is in like the thirteen thousand dollar range or something.
That's correct, yeah.
And I'm, I'm gonna talk to you, Brandon and I, about several things we've got going, but this was one that came in above my spending allowance, and so because of that, we, we wanted to get permission from you to solicit bids and, and go from there, so.
Right, well, definitely need to solicit bids if it's, and see what they come in at. Look for a motion to approve the solicitor bid for the replacement of the lift station pumps at the county barn.
I'd make a motion to that effect. A motion, second?
So we're gonna replace both of them, the one that's not functioning at all and the one that needs to be so, yeah, good. I would second that.
Motion and second, yeah.
Commissioner Maymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Howard?
And Brandon's up for item number six also, solicit bids for replacement of the drain line and drain inlets at the annex parking lot.
Chair Howard, you do have a public comment on this item.
Public comment, go first.
Go ahead, Brandon.
Okay. Sorry, yeah, so we're looking for bids for that. It's a good day to be talking about this, is evidence of the problem that we have. So preliminary bid on this that we had was in about the twenty thousand dollar range, so that's kind of what we're looking at, but we'll just need approval to move forward with that and see what else we can get that in at.
That's the one we looked at that day, right?
Yes, yeah, so there's like a four-inch drain line in there right now, which is just way undersized, so we'll be changing that to a twelve-inch drain line, and we'll be replacing the inlet boxes as well, they're sinking into the ground anyway, so.
Some question on whether or not the bid that we've got includes putting the lot back together, includes the asphalt work and all of that, and so we're getting that clarification, and then while we're doing this, I've also got him looking at initial quotes for varying resurfaces of that lot, because in addition to needing to do this, the lot needs some level of, I don't know that it needs a complete milling and redo, but I, I don't know the, the, the blue collar term, but more of a skim coating type thing, I don't know, but he's looking at that, so.
Slurry seal?
Slurry seal, yeah.
Questions for Brandon on this? We all went out and looked at that day and know what, what he's talking about. Okay, thank you, Brandon. Okay, Jean, same thing as drill, as always, five minutes, only on this item. When you look on the internet on this item and the item that you just spoke on, the date was wrong. It said March thirteenth of two thousand eighteen, but this is March thirteenth of two thousand nineteen, so I imagine that's just a, an error on the date. But the reason I'm up here on this one is, is this was brought up about six years ago, long before, you know, Derek came here and the others about the drainage of the annex parking lot. And at that time, it was, you know, going from a four inch to an eight inch, if I remember correctly. So I'm glad to see that you would rather consider going from a four inch to a twelve-inch drainage, because it's very much needed, and I, it's taken this long now to do something about it. I hope you do do something about it, because it's been brought up before. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the solicitation of bids for the replacement of the drainage system in the annex parking lot.
Second.
A motion and second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes, yes, yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Maymeyer?
One yes.
Chair Howard?
One yes.
Takes us to staff reports, Derek.
Yeah, in addition to the projects that you've just approved bidding for, we're also moving forward on the ambulance station door. Nick's back door is in incredibly rough shape. We're, I mean, that's well within my spending authority, so we're having it replaced. In addition, the clock tower supports, you will recall, we're gonna move forward with that. Again, that's well within my spending authority. We're also having an individual come down and look at the clock itself, because we believe that the rotting is occurring due to some, something on the face of the clock needs looked at, and so he's gonna come down, take a look, give us a quote on that. So between the jail HVAC, annex parking lot, pump stations, EMS door, and clock tower, we've got a good number of projects going on right now. I'm reluctant to overload Brandon with too much more, but this really is a good amount. I mean, it, it takes a chunk out of that list that, that we've created and the things that you guys saw on the tour that day. Ottawa sanitation, that was brought up earlier. We did open bids for trash services this past week. We are in the process of gathering more information. We had questions about a couple of the bids that were submitted, and so we're in the process of getting that taken care of, and once we do that, we'll be able to have that back on agenda for your approval. And so one of the things we found was that there, a couple of the companies came to us with kind of different proposals than we went to them with, or hey, you could save money by putting, you know, this size of dumpster in this location, and so, which is great news for us. I think either direction that we end up going's gonna be great for the county, but we wanna make sure we have a full understanding of, of what those bids were before we bring a recommendation to the board. Is there anything else, Brandon, on any of that that you... Okay, I think a couple of you know this, I have a new assistant starting next week. We, we interviewed here Janet, Joanne, and I a couple weeks ago, and her name's Tammy Hoffner. She's currently works at KU Law School, got a great resume, very talented. I think the three of us, we're all very pleased with her, easily the consensus choice, and, and we're excited to have her on. I think Janet, and Joanne, and Dustin have all done a great job of kind of picking up the slack in various ways, but having this dedicated position back, I think it'll make things flow a little smoother, and so we'll probably have her down here at our next meeting. Talking about meetings and, I, Anne, I don't know if you are aware, I think the rest of you are, typically what we do before we cancel meetings is that's really the chair of the board's call, and so I will talk to the chair and, and might make a recommendation, and then, as the case may be, we might cancel a meeting. In this instance, I know at least two of the commissioners are out. I think a third might be, a bunch of staff is out, I put a feeler out, there's no burning items that need to come before you next week, so considering that, my recommendation to Rick was that we go ahead and cancel, and that's how we arrived at where we're at, and so, which is pretty normal. And I think that is all I have.
Nobody out there? Okay, so currently, as of this morning, we had five different locations, road locations
that are closed. Staff has been working on, on some of these over a couple of days, and we continue to work on them despite the, the rain that is occurring right now. We have over a hundred and fifty different sites throughout the county that we are tracking. We continue, I'm sure that, that that will, has gone up by the time I get back to the office. Fortunately, folks are calling in and letting us know so that we can track these, we can get out and look at them, and we are really trying to send our resources to the most hazardous locations first. We know it's terrible out there. The, the rain is, is not helping not one bit. We're hoping that Friday, the sun comes out and things start maybe turning a corner so that we can get out and do patching on the hard surface roads. I've driven a bunch of them lately, and, and they're, they're not in good shape, several of them. And so as soon as the weather permits, we will be out, we'll have multiple patching crews out trying to take care of these, so that we can assess them and, and see what we need to do for long-term fixes. That's the same with the gravel roads. We are trying to get these spots in condition where folks can travel down them at least one lane of traffic. It's gonna be a process to go back and fix these with long-term repairs. We are aware of these things, and we are making plans to, to do so as time goes on here and weather permits. So I would encourage folks to, to continue to let us know, because we, we cannot be everywhere. And so we rely on the, the citizens to call into the, the office here at the annex to, to let us know what's going on out there. You know, we may check on, on a particular road one day, and depending on the weather and circumstances, what we saw on, on Tuesday, it may be a different condition on Wednesday. And so please, please let us know whenever you see things out there, so that we can get them addressed as quickly as we possibly can. I think that is about it.
Please let your staff know that we very much appreciate their hard work, and I know incredible hours that they put in and...
And we have, we have borrowed the solid waste. They've got a truck out there that we have borrowed and put in, it into service. We're utilizing some of our blade operators in, in areas that are in pretty good shape to assist by driving trucks or running a piece of equipment. We've got at least five different crews out working. We've split up our, our trucks. It is a, really a logistics challenge to make sure that, that we're trying, you know, that we get these sites addressed, but the staff is doing an incredible job. They understand, they, they drive these roads too, and they have folks, friends, acquaintances, and others that know them, they're, they're calling them to let them know about different areas. It's really all hands on deck right now, so we're doing everything that we can.
I talked to one of the employees that's been there forty years, and last night, we were visiting about them, and he said that he'd seen roads that he thought was great, would never be an issue, that they're breaking down, so.
Yep.
It's, it's given them a lot of them, and I, I drove in Kansas City yesterday, and I was just amazed, because the traffic was bumper to bumper, because they were patching, how many big chunks of concrete has come out of there, out there too, so.
It's terrible.
Everybody's suffering.
Really, our, our work plan for the whole year is, is gonna be different than what we've done in the years past because of the weather that we've had this winter.
Okay.
I'll just remind you to fill out your worksheets that you have there and get them back to us by next Friday, the very latest, so we can get, get this back on your agenda.
Takes us to, Melissa, do you have anything that you need to, takes commissioner comments?
I'll jump over this real quick, 'cause we've got quite a bit here. I know, I did attend the Wellsville Chamber of Commerce yesterday, and I have been on that board twenty years now, even though when I wasn't a commissioner, I've always served on that. And Derek is completely right about the economic development, and, and I've always preached it all the time, I've been on this board, that issue, and I think Bill Waddle up there that's emerged, that helped serve on the Economic Development Committee, has voiced that opinion several times, but I do believe, he feels that in the last few years, there has been a, an opening, and, and it has been more dedicated towards them. I know I've worked with Mr. Keim up there with Keim Trucking and the city, and, and I try to, to do what I can as a commissioner, but, but I'm not the economic development. You know, you can, you can promote it, you can, you know, I ask that Derek and other people look towards that to improve it and help it, but, you know, and I do my part on that part, but there's, yeah, and hopefully we get a new economic developer person in there that they can promote it even further, you know. I did attend the, I went to a fire board meeting, I got invited up there to Wellsville, to Franklin County, and I just, just overall, hadn't been to one in several years, and, and they have a very good group up there now, where the city and the township is all one board now, and, and I've heard a lot from different fire, board meetings around, and it sounds like they're all fighting the same battles to, to keep up with the times and things going on. I did attend the Lane meeting, and as Chairman mentioned, that is one of the things that, they're one of the small cities in Rantoul too, that they've been talking with the other cities and trying to do something as a group, they can't afford to, to force their codes and so forth, trying to do a joint, hopefully put a joint deal together where they all can, as, put a few dollars together and make it big, bigger deal for them. And I might mention one other thing, if y'all have, you know, Fran Bennett, which is sort of for the county on the RCND board for thirty-some years, is one of our appointees and the county passed away, and he's been very instrumental in a lot of water issues in the county, and the library at Williamsburg, and a lot of other things, and, and his passing to be a great loss to the community, and, you know, I'd just like to make mention of his, and I know he, I can tell you out the Williamsburg area that he's involved in just about anything there is, and, and it's too bad we, you know, lost a person like that, but hopefully somebody will follow in his shoes there. That's all I got.
Hospital board had a special meeting. They voted to sign an affiliation agreement with Adventist Health, which is formerly Shawnee Mission Hospital. That agreement sent up to their management for them to sign. Adventist's management, so.
Just want to mention that Kansas State University is the Big Twelve basketball champion this year. The only thing I attended was the Chamber of Com, or the Ottawa Chamber of Commerce meeting yesterday at seven-thirty, and basically it was a lot of Legacy Square, just, you know, the, the getting started, and actually, there was a, a, a comment made by one of the members that a lot of those businesses there that were being affected actually had a very good week last week, an uptick in business, so that was good. There's a chamber copy on Saturday at ten, and, or not a chamber copy, but a legislative copy. Anyway, that's about it.
I wanted to just congratulate Cord Ferguson, is an outstanding shop builder and discus thrower for Ottawa High School a few years ago. He got sixth place... He got sixth place for the University of Alabama at the National NCAA Indoor Track Meet this last weekend. So congratulations, Cord Ferguson.
All right, Texas Tech might not appreciate being left out of that, but they'll have to be okay.
Yeah, well, they don't count.
Okay, I attended Richmond City Council last night. It was a pretty short meeting. They had a water pressure drop over the weekend that they had to go on a boil order. So they discussed that, uh, the causes of that and how they handled it and so forth. They also brought up KCPN L's, uh, told them they'll replace all their street lights with LED lights for, at no cost. And, uh, there was a couple there that had concerns still about dogs running at large. And that's the only thing I've been to since our last meeting. Okay, we have the joint lunch in today at the high school, going to front door, correct? Okay, it's at 12, correct? The meetings for next week could be canceled at this point if something comes up. KOFO tomorrow. You and I have a meeting in the morning, the FCDC meeting in the morning. And I'll be gone. Do you, unless you have something else planned, I can get ahold of Brad and-
I'll, I'll make sure somebody gets out there.
Okay. Okay. All right, anybody have anything else? If not, would look for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're all opposed? We're adjourned.